Welcome to the May 29, 2025 Arlington School Committee meeting. We are here today with a quorum just of Ms. Exton, Dr. Allison Ampe, Mr. Schlickman, and myself. We are anticipating Mr. Carden, Mr. Thielman, and Ms. Gittleson arriving a little bit late due to work and school concert obligations and excitement. We have Sophie DiStefanos with us here as the Arlington High School Student Representative. We have Jenna Mederos with us on Zoom as the Arlington Education Association Representative. She waved, so I think she can hear us, which is a good sign. Can you just make sure we can hear you, just in case?
Hi.
Hi. Great. Thank you so much. So, I'm pulling up my documents that I did not bring, the printed copy. Tonight's meeting of the Arlington School Committee is being conducted in person and through the use of Zoom. This meeting is being simultaneously broadcast on ACMI, and the meeting is being recorded because all members who we anticipate participating in the meeting at this point are present. Votes will be taken by voice unless a roll call is required. Persons wishing to access the meeting using Zoom may find information on how to do so on the town's website. The posted agenda and supporting materials for this meeting are also available on the town's website. Due to open-meeting law restrictions, the committee cannot participate in or access Zoom's chat function while everyone is welcome to observe this meeting, active/remote. Participation requires advance notice. All participants are asked to activate their camera and shall provide their full name in the interest of developing a record of the meeting. So, I believe our first item on the agenda, which I am pulling up, is public comment. We do not have anybody here presently for public comment. I do not see anybody online. So, we are going to move on to the AHS Student Representatives. Sophie, what do you have for us tonight?
We have the Student Council election results are coming out Friday. Very exciting. We have our seniors last week this Friday as well, and graduation for them is on the 7th. And the person who's usually here, Zach, is actually at Frisbee because Frisbee won states and is going to nationals. We have a Boston Youth Symphony Orchestra concert this weekend in the auditorium here, and we had a counselor luncheon for mental health today. It was very successful because it's at the Health Awareness Month. And we had MCAS last week for the sophomores, so they're done with everything. Very exciting.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Any questions for Sophie?
Welcome.
Why, thank you.
All right. Seeing none, we are going to move on to the second read of the district calendar for 2026-2027. This one, we've looked at a couple of times. I reviewed it pretty closely today. Is this the most updated one, though? It doesn't look like it. Or no, maybe it is?
It is. Yeah.
Oh, good. Okay.
That's our one.
Great. Dr. Homan, do you have anything to say about it?
Sure.
So, I guess the only question that I have about the calendar that was unresolved was around Juneteenth.
Right.
Which, yeah.
We decided to, so the question was, is Juneteenth going to hit on that 18th, which is currently slated as the last day of school that year? It's the 19th, but if it's a federal holiday, there's sometimes an observance that is required on either side of a weekend if it falls on a weekend. And so, it's possible that we will need to adjust the last day of school in the event that there's an observance because Juneteenth is falling on the Saturday. It's, I'm not sure exactly how that will work, but I want to check in with the town and see if they know kind of how they would respond to that, and then we would go from there. It is right there at that last day of school. So, my worry would be that we plan for that. We'd be bumping, we'd be planning to bump the last day of school into the following week. I'd be happy to take a look at the calendar in the event we're doing an observance on the 18th to see if there's anywhere else we might be able to adjust in order to make sure we observe Juneteenth so that we're not falling into that last week, which I know has a pretty big, we did it this year. It has an impact on people's camp schedules and everything else. So, we've left it there for now, acknowledging that there's, that I need to follow up on Juneteenth holiday.
Okay. Sounds good. I mean, that's, the last day would be that day, given there were no snow days. So,
Right.
I'm not optimistic. I think we're going to end up in that. I think it's very unlikely to not have any cancellations for weather, but who knows? It could happen. Any questions, comments about the 26-27?
I, yes. Go ahead. I just want to know, we moved a couple of school committee meetings around because we're trying to avoid conferences on the same day. So, there are, but it worked out so that there was still a gap between meetings. So, we moved January meeting, which was on the 14th, to the 7th to avoid conferences. We moved, we didn't change the meeting date, but the conference on, or maybe we changed the meeting date from the 12th of November to the 5th because the conferences on that day are afternoon conferences. They're not evening conferences. We're trying to avoid conflicts per policy. So, we shuffled a couple of things around in this one and the next one to accommodate that.
Mr. Schlickman?
Yeah, the November meeting, I think it was on the 12th. I'm having trouble getting things to work. It is a problem in that, that's traditionally the timing of the MASCE conference, and we usually adjust our meetings to avoid that. We can do two meetings in November, one the week before, one the week after, but the 12th is a, is a potential problem. Now, that said,
We don't have one on the 12th.
I think you mean the 18th.
Yeah. Well, whatever the date is, I'm having trouble getting things up on the district website. I'm finding, well, the Arlington website's down, so maybe I can get in through Novus.
Yeah, these won't be listed on the website because they're not approved yet.
But, yeah, that, we've got, that second Thursday in November is a problem for schools.
So, right now, there's a, it was on the second Thursday, but it also conflicted with evening conferences, which doesn't work for our policy, doesn't work for me. So, we moved that, that meeting back to the, to November 5th.
Okay, then that, then that would work.
And then the next two Thursdays are, do not have a school committee meeting on them.
Yeah. Because that was the one thing I noticed when we were going through the calendars, is to watch out for November.
Yeah, that one moved.
Yep.
Okay.
So, that was a win-win, sounds like.
Yeah, sounds like.
Yes. Dr. Allison Ampe?
I just wanted to check. I was trying to look up when Rosh Hashanah is, and my understanding from Google is that it's starting the evening of the 11th one year and the 12th or 10th the next year, and so neither year does it fall. But I'm trying to make sure that we are definitely avoiding any problems with that.
I have looked at that, yeah.
Okay, okay. So, we're good. Because it's not something I know for sure.
Yeah, one of them comes on a Sunday, another one comes on Indigenous Peoples' Day. So, that we, we're getting a, getting a couple of years where we're only taking off for one holiday.
Great. Well, we're taking Yom Kippur in the 26-27 calendar. The September 21st date is the, is Yom Kippur.
Then Rosh Hashanah that year is aligned with Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Okay.
Always wonderful when a holiday is, a legal holiday is also a fast day, yeah.
I think it's actually September 12th, but.
Oh, was, I got, did I have the backwards? I went through all three calendars.
And then the other thing is just to point out, I understand what you did about January, and that makes sense, but that may make it tougher budget stuff. I mean, that, that schedule, looking at it, that's looking a little, what we'll see. So, but that's far away.
Would the, would the 7th and the 21st be better? There's no reason that it's the 28th versus the 21st. You could, we could, so we could do January 7th, January 21st.
Yeah.
Like, let's, let's pick it now, Kersey, if you have a preference, because I'd rather get it closer to right. So, the, the date that's a no-go is January 14th because there are conferences that night. So, we're not going to use that, but you can pick whatever cadence you want. You can do 7, 20, you can do January 7th, January 21st, and February 4th, if that sounds better?
I think switching to the 21st and leaving the 11th for now makes more sense, and then we're just going to have to see what, where we're at with everything at that point.
Sounds good. So, Ms. Diggins, we're going to want to move that asterisks from the 7th to the 21st. Well, sorry, no, from the 28th to the 21st when we post this. So, that's going to be what we approve.
26-27.
Yes. Anything else? Ms. Exton?
All right. I'm going back to the Juneteenth discussion. So, are we, is Arlington waiting to see what sort of like the town does? Is that the idea?
I admit, I don't know exactly what precipitates an observance day or not, if it's.
So, I'm, I'm on the DESI website.
Okay.
It's not, it doesn't go to this year, but it says, under state law, a legal holiday that falls on a Sunday is observed on the following Monday, and a legal holiday that falls on a Saturday is observed on Saturday. So, we can legally, state legally,
Yeah.
have school on the 18th. But I guess what I'm trying to understand is, we're waiting to see what the,
Yeah.
the town of Arlington decides to do.
But, and I think that there's a difference for some federal holidays that will, I know, but I don't know like legal, who's legal, state or federal.
Well, I think we can have school whenever we want. We don't, like, there are people that have school on Veterans Day. Right? I mean, I'm not advocating that, but.
I'm not sure that.
Well, yes.
Yes.
But, no, this says, under state law, all public offices, including public schools, must be closed on these statewide legal holidays, and there's a list,
Yep.
of which Juneteenth is one of them. It doesn't fall on a Saturday on this list, but Veterans Day is another one.
Mm-hmm.
Saturday, November 11. Now, we were closed on the 10th, but I see, I see where there's a problem, but I guess we can have school.
Well, we also have the contractual provisions, which I'm pretty sure do not require us to close school on that day, but I want to double-check all of that before we plan on that. I don't, we don't have, I know that recently we agreed to a contract that does not require us to close on Juneteenth, but I want to double-check all of them because I think there might be some conflicts in them.
The Secretary of State offers an opinion, and then on the Secretary of State's website, he has the holiday information, a list of all the legal holidays observed in Massachusetts, including Juneteenth in 2027, which is observed on June 19th, a Saturday.
So, we're going to move ahead, it sounds like, with school on June 18th, unless there is a,
Unless I find something that tells me we can.
Unless we find some reason not to, and then we will come back and revote it. Yeah, sounds like a plan. Okey-dokey. Anything else? Seeing none. I'm looking for a motion to approve the 26-27 school calendar.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On the pass. All opposed, abstentions. So, but how many of us are here now? Five, nothing vote. All right. Excellent. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the first read of the 27-28 district calendar. We are not planning on voting on this tonight. I think that, so, feedback and questions on the 27-28 calendar?
We're not approving that tonight.
We are not. We are providing feedback to the team to make adjustments as needed, and then we will bring it back for another vote. So, my feedback on this is this is a year where graduation is very, very early. We do eke in, we get the 12 days. So, it's legal. I, I really would like to see the high school change their practice of letting kids out, like, June, you know, I would prefer that the last day, they don't let kids out like June 24th because they give them the whole week off before graduation, so they take that whole week as well. So, they're taking their 12 days, right, from when school ends, and then AHS takes another week off for seniors. They don't go to school the last week before graduation, and then they start cutting into the week prior to that for exams. So, like, a lot of kids would finish, given the past practice of the schedule, somewhere around May 23rd, May 24th, which is very, very, very early, given where graduation lands. So.
I'll review the plan for that.
It would be good to go over that, just because we're already, you know, they're already lose, because of where graduation falls, if we want to do it that first weekend of June, they're already missing a good chunk of days. Any other comments on this one? Oh, and then the other one? Oh, yeah, never mind. That wasn't it. I didn't have a question about that.
Are you?
Yeah, go ahead.
This only looks like they have, wait, 8-day, right? The last day without snow is the 14th.
Oh, is that right?
No.
The whole, it was like, the whole thing is, the whole thing is early.
Oh, no, you're right. I was reading the last diamond.
It's because
That's the snow day diamond.
We're implementing our go-back-on-the-1st-of-September, which is where, yeah.
So, and this is as early as it can be, is that right? So, and then this is what happens when there are, we don't take either of the Jewish holidays, right?
Because they fall on weekends.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, no.
I, that's, I mean.
So, because this is
They still need to go to school until graduation, but
I will review the plan with Dr. Jink.
The 21st versus the 14th is totally different.
This is fewer days than the calendar we just approved.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Absolutely. All right. Anybody else on this? All right. We will bring it back and vote it next time. The next item is the after-school programming report. Dr. Homan is going to deliver this. This is per policy KFD. So, and we received it very early, which is great. So, hopefully everybody had a chance to review it.
Yep. I am having trouble, I can't share on this webinar, my screen.
Yeah, there's something wrong with the internet here.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, now it's letting me. Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. I did send an update to these slides earlier this afternoon when I got some additional data, and this is the annual after-school program report that we do around this time, and let's talk about after-school programs. So, I want to start with an overview of some of our enrollment trends. We haven't, in all of the previous versions of this report that I've done, had a lot of, you know, multiple years where we can show ongoing trends. This one is broken out with the two Arlington after-school program, sort of program models. I separate these because the dual-language program exists in a school with the Bracket after-school program, and so its numbers, it's a significantly different program because it's a dual-language program. So, I sort of separated it out. The other, the, this is an aggregate of all of the Arlington after-school programs in four other schools that are general admission. And then, these are our four programs at Bracket, Bishop, Dalen, and Stratton, and their enrollment trends over the last several years. We have increased access to after-school programming, even as enrollments have stabilized or decreased slightly at most of the schools. So, that's a positive thing, and I'm going to dig in a little bit to sort of what the breakout is, the percentage of families are able to access after-school program, and so what we've learned in looking through the data for this year. One bit of analysis that we haven't done in the past, but that I was curious about because I know that the enrollment itself has shifted at the elementary level, was to look at the different elementary schools and sort of the percent of the population that was accessing after-school programming at all. This is a little complicated because there are different ways of accessing after-school programming at the different schools and in the different programs. So, one of the things that, you know, when we have all these different programs operating in some of the schools that we don't have as much sort of operational understanding of or control over, is how many, like, what the prioritization is around families gaining access if they need access. Are we prioritizing families gaining full day, full week access if they need that, or are we prioritizing having as many families be able to access a day or two as we possibly can? And there are differing sort of approaches to this, I think, at some of the different programs, but we don't collect the data rostered out for like exactly how many. We do have some of that information around like average number of students per day for some of the programs, but there are, it's not as simple as reporting enrollment because different families have different arrangements on different days of the week. And Wednesday is always the most popular day because of the early release. But what you do see is that there are higher rates of access to the program at some schools. I think this is complicated partially by the fact that the AASP programs at Hardy, Thompson, Pierce, and Bracket have prioritized providing families with a full schedule first. So, when they go back to the waitlist, they'll fill out a family's schedule if they know that that family's been waiting for additional spots on other days, and they'll do that, and then they'll pull in some pieces-together access as they can, but they will often find that if they offer families a day or two here and there, they'll, it doesn't work for the family because then they're picking up from different places or they're in different programming throughout the week. So, that's based on feedback that they've gotten from the, from the community, but that's not going to change this percentage because the same family is accessing it. They're just accessing it on more days. Here are overall trends for the programs that fall under the Arlington Public Schools umbrella. This is enrollment trends on the left-hand side and waitlists on the right-hand side. Pleased to report that this year we got waitlists in two of the programs, the one at Hardy and the one at Pierce, down to zero, and that was over the course of the year by adding staff during, throughout the year. As we moved through fall, it got easier to hire folks, and they were able to pull folks off the waitlist. We still have two programs at the Thompson, sorry, it was Bracket and Pierce that got down to zero. Hardy and Thompson are still oversubscribed, still working on getting the waitlists down at those two schools, but we're hopeful that next year we'll be able to significantly reduce or even eliminate the waitlist at those schools. I think one of the things we need to figure out how to do if we're going to do that is how to support facilities to make sure that the schools can be cleaned, put back together, and ready to go for the following school day, but the rentals should cover that if we figure out a rental formula that operates well, and I'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute. This is a little bit more on the enrollment trends for the programs that are in district. We have seen a pretty significant increase over the last several years in the percentage of students who are able to access particularly the dual-language program. That has gone up significantly. So, when you think about the percentage of students accessing at Bracket and how high that was on the previous slide, that's incorporating the dual-language program and the BASB, the BASS program. The increase in percentage has been due to this shift for the dual-language program. Relatively stable percentage access for the other programs, and this is the enrollment trend over the last four years overall. These are our vendor programs, our vendor partners. We see an increase, a pretty significant increase at the Bishop program, relatively stable in other places, and some waitlist numbers that are jumping around a little bit over the last four years. It's, the waitlists are also a bit of a snapshot, kind of depends when you ask, what you'll get back, and it's unclear sometimes whether we've gone back to see, did you find something? Are you still on a waitlist at the time that we gather this data in the spring? Sometimes families, they're still technically on a waitlist, but we don't know if they ended up finding something or not. I want to go over a little bit of the financials. We've done some additional analysis on this. We ask all of the programs for their financial data to report to all of you per school committee policy. A couple of analyses that I did this year just to sort of understand how finances operate in some of these programs was to take a look at the overall expenditure, the increases or decreases over time, the revenue increases or decreases over time, and the annual cost of families, what we're charging for a five-day week. So, that's along the bottom here. The expenditures per student is trying to get at an idea of what the cost per student is to run the program, and then revenue per student, a sense of how much we're bringing in per student. And this can be impacted if, if a program is offering some degree of financial aid, then it could be that the revenue per student is a little bit lower than what we're actually charging. I know that's the case for AASP, and that's because there, the cost to run the program itself includes the ability for the program to support families if they need financial assistance to some extent. So, the one thing that I will point out is AASP, you'll see a huge expenditure increase for this year, for this school year that we're in. Some of that is because we've spent some of the balance buffer that was the result of salary savings on a significant professional development effort for that program so that there is consistent play practices, supervision of recess time, and so that the staff can be built up. They've turned over like nearly the whole staff over the last several years, and so having the opportunity for them to have a training day, they canceled programming one day this spring so that they could do this professional development, and that came at some cost, and so there's a significant increase to the expenditures. They've also done some pay increases so that they can continue to compete with other programs in the area and hire staff so that they could increase enrollments. So, I know that that's one of the reasons we see a pretty high, a pretty big difference between expenditure and revenue here, but that's something that should come back down in future years. So, a few things that we've done internally for AASP programming adjustments. We've increased staff, like I said, to meet demand across programs, eliminated some waitlists wherever we could. We still have some waitlists at Hardy and Thompson to try to get down so that families can have after-school access at their home school. We've prioritized full schedules for families who are requesting additional days, established protocols for providing financial aid or access to after-school care, especially when it's necessary for school attendance. There are times when the district will step in and say, you know, if after-school is accessible for this family, it's going to make all the difference for a challenge with absenteeism, and so let's see if we can make that happen. That's been something we've prioritized this year. Professional learning for staff and pay increases, and I talked about most of that as we moved through. A few next steps that I think would be worth further discussion and that I am hoping to discuss also with some of our vendor partners and, of course, Mr. Morse, who runs the AASP program, is how we make sure that we maintain program levels and plan for continued improvements and reduction of waitlists. I want to be cognizant that we have other organizations in town that also provide after-school care that students might walk to from a bus or access via transportation in town, and those programs are fantastic, and we hear from families that they'd love to have access to after-school care at their school. So, there's a bit of a balance there. We certainly don't want to take business from some of our partners in town, and we want to make sure that families have access to the care that works for them. We are trying to expand opportunities for AASP employees to contribute to APS with, for example, we've done some part-time TA hours, some substitute opportunities, lunch monitoring. We've had a lot of staff take us up on this because they want a fuller schedule, and that has helped us retain some staff for a longer period of time, which has been fantastic. So, we're trying to do that where it makes sense and where we can finance it because it also helps the schools maintain some common routines during recess since they've worked on that in AASP. And we're, of course, like I said, expenditures didn't match revenues this year, so making sure we develop a sustainable sure we develop a sustainability plan for the revolving fund that builds that, takes that balance down a bit from salary savings, but also improves the program and make sure that it's sustainable over time. We, Mr. Gorsky and I are revising our approach to rental fees, and we're looking at an annual anticipated percent increase that we can share with programs so that they know this is the increase you can anticipate, expect, and project for in your financials. And we're also going to take a look at a per-pupil rental allocation for these programs, given that the sort of demand on the building has a lot more to do with the number of kids that are in the building, then it's very complicated to sort of do a rental calculation by exactly how many rooms they're using when they're using so much of the school. It'd be a lot easier for us to tie that to enrollment and revenue amounts, and so we're taking a look at that calculation and thinking about a different way to do it than what we've done in the past. And then, of course, thinking about the potential future expansion of programming that is internal to the school system at some additional sites potentially. So that is the after-school report. I'm happy to answer any questions. In addition to these slides, there's also the financial breakdown and projections both for this end of fiscal year this year and next year and the materials that you have.
Questions for Dr. Homan on the after-school report. Dr. Allison Amby.
Thank you. So thank you for this. This is helpful. Two questions. First, are we, if we're choosing to prioritize filling out schedules for families, are we communicating that to families so they know if they get offered a single day, you know, if they're really interested, that they know they should take it because then they're going to have a chance to get in?
I will check on that with, with Todd. I'm not sure how we have communicated that in the past. I know that families usually, if they will get, if they get a day at the school, they will often take it. So we do have a lot of families who have sort of partial schedules.
Right, right. I'm just.
But I'm not sure if we've told people prioritize that over a full.
Well, that, that we're, I mean, that our approach is, once you're in, we're going to try and fill your schedule before we invite somebody else.
Yep. I don't, I, we probably, I will double-check this, and I'll get back to you. I doubt we've communicated it exactly that explicitly, mostly because the strategy of adding the staff in this year was ongoing, and it was not, like, we didn't know if it would work. So the fact that it has is great, but I think that strategy was developed as we went, so we should communicate it more clearly at the start of next year.
Great. And then my second question is just, I was looking at the salaries of the directors versus the amount that's spent for other staff salaries and looking at ratios, and it varies by a factor of three, which seems like a lot. And I don't, I don't know what it means, but it troubles me. And I just wanted to bring it up, and maybe we can think a bit more about what it means and if, if it implies any, any actionable things. So that's, I just, factor of three is a lot.
I don't have a lot of.
And also, I want to, I wanted to be sure, is everyone being paid the same?
We, and we don't.
I mean, at, at level, I mean, not, not the directors, but the other staff, are we, you know, is the reason that it's different because some places aren't paying their people as much? And anyway, that, you, you hear my concerns.
Yeah, I understand, and we don't collect all of the data that I would need to answer some of those questions.
Okay.
I could certainly find them out for our program, but I can think about how to broach some of that and take a look at some of what we do have. Because we do have, we collect more than all that is here. We have a little more granularity from the programs.
Sure.
I'm also meeting with a couple of our vendor partner directors in the next couple of weeks to kind of understand how they're running their programs, so I can bring some of those questions to those meetings, too.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Gittleson.
This is sort of adding on to what Dr. Allison Amby said. I, I was looking at the table from the other direction and was quite struck by the range in the cost of a five-day week across the programs, and that also, I, I, you may have said this, and I didn't get it, but I know that with the internally-run programs, we've put a large priority on financial aid, but do we have the data on what the vendor programs are doing? Because I just look at these numbers, and I think that's a real disparity that's only based on what neighborhood you live in.
I do ask that about sort of whether or not they offer an option for financial aid is one of the reporting requirements on the form that we do. What we don't have visibility into is just how often that's accessed, what the model is for that. As the committee knows, I've done some work this year to try to align our financial aid models across different programs, and, but that doesn't necessarily apply to those programs. Could we make it apply? Probably. We can have a conversation with them about that, but it's not part of the agreement that they sign off on right now. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't know unless we asked for additional information.
I think as, that, that last question that you raised about sort of expanding internal operations, a lot of answers to that kind of question is important to me.
Ms. Exton.
So I'm, I'm thinking a little bit, or a lot, about your, that last line about expanding, and I'm curious, is there a process or a timeline, and I feel like I've been paying attention to this for seven or eight years, where the vendor partners have to like re-up, make a bid, you know, I mean, you know, I know town, town buildings, it's what, every 10 years?
This is a, so I have the same question. I think procurement practice alone suggests that either we should consider absorbing some of these programs into AASP, which gives us some latitude, or we should be considering whether or not these programs are competitive for our families and have a bid process attached to them. My understanding is that that has not been done in the past. And what I don't know, because I just wasn't here, was what the historical strategy was for, for launching and then growing the AASP umbrella. What I would want to make sure of is that, like, there are aspects of each of these programs that are really beloved by the school community, and there are staff there who are also really well-liked, and so in any one, I, I think that process has to be gradual. At the same time, we have to make sure that we're in compliance with procurement rules and regulations, and this is a question that has come up this year and that I've discussed very briefly with Jim Feeney, and that I think Mr. Gorsky and I, in figuring out a rental formula, also need to go and figure out what our obligations are with regards to competitive programming and procurement, because there are other vendors in the area who provide this service, and I want to make sure that we're not doing something in a way that we shouldn't be so that families have access to competitive programming and pricing.
Okay. Thanks. Mr. Carden.
Thanks. So I've also been following this for a long time. We didn't put policy KFD in because we were interested in spending a whole lot of time on this matter in general. It was because the community raised a lot of issues with the lack of programming and the waitlists, and so that's why we require an annual data report. And unfortunately, there's been very, very, very slow progress in eliminating the waitlist, which was sort of our main objective in passing this policy. I guess, you know, I, I, I think I'd want to hear a lot more about, you know, why we're unable to make progress at Thompson in particular with AASP before we consider, you know, expanding that program, whereas, you know, Bishop has always not had a problem. I think it's probably perhaps related to be, to the fact that their fee is so high and maybe perhaps they're, they're getting all the staff because they pay more? I don't know. I mean, I think that's an interesting question to find out, but, you know, the, the key here, I mean, we want to provide good programming, but we also want to meet the need of our community, and, you know, clearly with such large waitlists, we're not. So to me, the priority is figuring out, again, is there anything we can do to address the waitlists first, particularly at Thompson at our own program, and then think about other stuff we might take with other programs. Thanks.
Anybody else? Dr. Allison Amby.
Can I follow up on what Ms. Gittleson said about the varying cost per, for a five-day week? I guess something that would be helpful to note is, is the average cost for the AASP, does that include the pupils who aren't paying? So it's, it's being, you know?
Yes.
So.
Oh, so that's not just tuition?
No, no, so on that report, so actually.
What I'm saying, for the people who don't receive financial aid, what is their cost?
The annual cost to a family, the annual cost for a five-day week is that bottom line. So that's what it costs for the whole year if you have a five-day week schedule in that program.
And you don't have financial aid?
Correct.
Okay. So it's not, those costs aren't averaging in the people who are receiving five-day financial aid?
Correct. That's the pri, that's the fee.
That's the fee. Okay. Thank you.
The expenditure per student, or no, the revenue per student is factoring that in because it takes the total revenue and divides it by the number of students in the program. And I just do want to note that Thompson's program has significantly increased enrollment over the past four years. So, you know, we have made, we do still have a very persistent waitlist. We have more demand every year at that school and more enrollment every year at that school and a stable waitlist. And I also hear Mr. Carden's point that it would be great to get the numbers of all four of those programs down to zero. So that is something we're going to look at how to do for next year. It has demands on the building, is one of our bigger challenges, and it requires staffing, and you have to plan the staffing before you enroll the kids. So there's a bit of a cart-horse challenge that, that plays a role here. You need to know you've got the kids to hire the staff. You have to know that you're going to be able to get the staff before you put the kids in place, and that has been the challenge over the course of the past couple of years. But it's improving, and we've been able to pull more kids in, so that's a positive.
Great, thank you. So my comment is just echoing what a lot of people have said. I'm very troubled by the cost of a five-day week at Bishop. I, I don't, I don't really see how it's okay that if you, that you could be at Pierce and paying $5,600, and you could be at Bishop paying $8,700 for a five-day week. I just, I, I'm, I'm really uncomfortable with that. So it's something that I, I would like to look at actually this before next year because what happens is, is that we, and this is like, it's been, the, the report is great. It has improved every year, so we're really getting a lot closer to what we want to see. But I, I think we need, if we're going to make progress on this, we, we need to sort of probably take this up in the fall, maybe in subcommittee, to look at some of these issues so that it's, it's not a sort of once-a-year thing if we're actually going to get movement on it. To Mr. Carden's point, I, I don't really want to spend a lot of time on this either, to be honest. And this, to me, is, it, it's really troubling. I mean, $30,000 is a lot of dollars, and that is per kid, right? So a, a family like mine with four kids, that's, that is, that's a lot of money per year based on me living in one area versus, you know, six blocks away. So anyway, we can talk about what makes sense in the fall and what we, you know, how we want to look at this, but I, I think it may be time for the committee as the, you know, as the owners of these, these buildings to take, you know, to take a look at this and, and just make sure that our policies are in line with what, what we're looking at for, for folks who are renting our spaces. So, but we can talk about, if there's appetite from others to do that, we can, we can discuss it in the fall. So, okay. Anybody else on after-school report? Seeing none. District goals. So this is a first read, just to level-set expectations. So these are here with us tonight, which is great. There is a CIA meeting that is happening on June 2nd at 3:30, led by Ms. Exton. One of their agenda items will be reviewing the district goals, probably in, I would assume in pretty significant detail. So if you have, you can obviously provide feedback on these tonight to Dr. Homan. If you would like to participate in a more interactive review process, try to attend that June 2nd meeting, and then our plan is to bring these back to the full committee on June 4th for a second read and a possible vote. So, Dr. Homan, do you, do you have anything on this? Do you, are you, what, what makes sense to you on how we sort of approach this?
I wanted, there's not action to be taken on one of the documents, which is a status update on where we are with this year's district goals. I'm realizing, now that I look at the PDF version of it, that it might be a little hard to read some of the status update dropdowns. So I have a sheets version of this that I'm happy to share with any members of the committee who'd like to see it in perhaps a slightly easier-to-read format. But the goal of the status update, this is the first time we've provided this to you, is to give you sort of a sense of where we are as we close out the year on each of the goals that we had for this school year and where we expect to be when we close out the full school year in a few weeks. And there's a little bit of a narrative on the, all the way on the right-hand side about some of the work that has happened with that goal. As we did that process, we were reflecting on the fact that having a goal for the district for every single initiative in the strategic plan and then also action steps beneath each of those goals is quite onerous when we think about trying to focus our efforts around, particularly some of the instructional goals that we have as a district. And so this year's goals are streamlined. There is, there are goals and action steps underneath them attached to each of the four strategic priorities. One major goal for each strategic priority with three actions listed beneath each one that hopefully are things that we can sort of capture within a year. So one of the other things we realized when we went through the status update was that there are lots of goals there that while they are things we are working on, they are things we're never going to finish in a year. They're going to be ongoing. You're not going to hit met, completed on that. You're always going to feel like you're sort of making some progress towards it. So this year, we tried to make those action steps that we'll provide an update on at the end of next year, be things that within a year, it, it's reasonable for us to have made significant progress to, on or have met. There are a few goals in there also in the status update that we've sort of noted some shifting priorities on, either because we learned as we went and discovered that maybe that wasn't where our attention needed to be right this minute, or we hit an obstacle and needed to pivot. I'm happy to answer any questions about any of those, but wanted to make sure that we circled back to this year's goals while we also looked ahead to next year's and thought about whatever the next step would be on those. So happy to take some written feedback, if you have any, over the next week or so. We'll bring these to CIAA with any edits that we have next week, and then hopefully vote them so we can share them with staff in the first week of June.
Dr. Allison Amby.
Just one comment on the goals for next year. Under goal three, it says establish, sorry, I have to make it bigger. Says establishing effective central office workflows to enhance operational accountability, blah, blah, blah. I'm wondering, can we add cross-training to that? If there's any ability to cross-train for any roles?
Can you say a little more about?
People who can do more than one job, I mean, more, the functions of more than one job, so that if someone is not there.
Redundancy?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, you're cross-training to create redundancy.
Anybody else? All right. Seeing none. Super T unit report. All right. We're moving. We're moving.
This'll be quick, we are.
Yeah, you're doing great.
Okay, and that's good, because my battery is on its last legs. All right, we have some fun end-of-the-school-year things going on across the schools over the last couple of weeks and into next week. So we'll be saying congratulations to the class of 2025 over the next couple of weeks. Our graduation ceremonies will be on June 7th at 1:00 PM out on Pierce Field, and awards night shortly before that on June 5th. The seniors had their prom and looked absolutely fantastic as they got on the buses to head towards their prom site this past week and are really enjoying celebrating their final days with us here at Arlington High School over the next week and a half or so. We had Metco's Third Annual Field Day at Dallin this week, and there was a lot of fun in the sun. It was on Wednesday, our early release day, and the entire Metco community of students went over to the Dallin Fields and enjoyed some organized games and play with one another. The AHS Corral and, I'm going to say this wrong, Sinfonietta Ensembles performed at the MMEA's Hill Day at the State House. If you recall, last year, we had some of our elementary groups go to that event and sing on the steps at the State House. It's an awesome event that celebrates the arts and advocates for funding for performing arts in our schools. Arlington's been showcased there several times now, and we're very, very proud of our programs and the ability to demonstrate some of the work we've done on that at, at the State House. So good for them. I hear the performance was absolutely beautiful. I have a few sort of operational updates. We have reached a tentative agreement with Unit D just yesterday and are very excited about that. It's a fantastic agreement that we're looking forward to sharing with everybody publicly as soon as we do ratification and a vote in June. We have a couple of administrative hiring searches that have wrapped up and want to say congratulations to Kevin Casey, who will be our new assistant principal at the Odysseum, and our new dean at Arlington High School. That was a new budgetary add, and we're looking forward to join, to Amanda Donahue joining the Arlington High School administrative team. I also have some enrollment updates for you. Our numbers have jumped up since the last one. We have right now 392 submitted K registrations with 349 of those completed and approved, and I had the projection sheet updated today, this afternoon, and that's been uploaded into your materials. So if you wanted to take another look at that, we just updated that this afternoon. Our current kindergarten class average has jumped up to 15.2. They're still relatively low. We're anticipating several more enrollments over the course of the summer. They have a range of 13 to 18 students per class, and one of the spots where that's the lowest, we do have the potential to be able to shift that staffing over to first grade, and so that's something we're going to keep a close eye on over the next couple of weeks. We've gotten 534 submissions for new enrollments so far this year. 448 of them are approved district-wide. 391 of those are in pre-K to 5. 18 are in grade 6 to 8. We have 13 pending at that level, and 42 are at Arlington High School with 15 pending at that level. Folks had asked about what grades the new students were joining in. So that's what that table is. The grades are across the top, so you'll see that at the high school, those enrollments, the vast majority of them are at ninth grade, and then it sort of evens out after that. At middle school, we have that mostly at sixth and seventh grade, and of course, at elementary school, most of those are in kindergarten with 35 preschoolers enrolled at this point. And that is my update. Happy to answer any questions.
Great. Any questions for Dr. Homan on their update? Seeing none. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. I actually need to pull something off of the consent agenda, the 25-26 calendar, so do I need to do that, Mr. Schlickman, before I read my little spiel or not?
You could read the little spiel and just not read the.
Okay, and then we'll deal with that one next. Okeydoke. All items listed with asterisks are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee so requests, in which event the item will be considered in its normal sequence. School committee draft meeting minutes, May 15th, 2025. Warrant 25277 dated 5/29/2025 and the amount of $856,719.76.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Abstentions? Great, unanimous vote. Okay, so for the 25-26 calendar, I appreciate the efforts to update the elementary conferences, and in doing so, we created the same conflicts in December that we have evening conferences on November 6th and November 20th, which, November 6th, our elementary conference conflict.
Which year are we talking about now?
25-26, next year.
Next year.
Yep. So the new calendar that we were going to vote as part of the consent agenda, it looks like there were updates to elementary conferences from the previous one, but in updating that, we have created the meeting conference.
We will bring it back.
Conflict, so we can bring that back. It's probably easier than just trying to fix it in.
Yep.
Right now. It's probably fixable. Anyway, bring it back with the same, like, daytime shift that we had before. Okay, subcommittee liaison reports and announcements, budget. Dr. Allison Ampe?
Nothing to report. I think we'll probably be scheduling a budget meeting soon.
Community relations, Ms. Gittleson?
We have our joint meeting with facilities on June 9th.
Exciting. You guys have been talking about that for a while. It's really hyped up, so I'm, I'm looking forward to that one.
Yeah.
I hope there are snacks.
Mr. Thielman may or may not be there.
No, I'll be there. Yeah, well, I'll be there.
Okay. Curriculum instruction assessment and accountability, Ms. Exton?
We are meeting on Monday, June 2nd at 3:30 to discuss the district goals, to get an update on the student services report. Approve some minutes, I feel like there's one more thing.
HGI.
Oh, and a heterogeneous grouping initiative update. Thank you. I knew there was an important big one on there.
Facilities, Mr. Thielman?
We meet on June 9th. From 3:30 to 4:00, we're going to do the tech and space plan.
Policy, Mr. Schlickman?
Yeah, we'll be scheduling some sorts of meeting in June.
Arlington High School Building Committee, Mr. Thielman?
Moving forward.
Liaison reports, announcements, future agenda items. Seeing none. Motion to move to executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to collect, conduct collective bargaining sessions, or contract, contract, why am I having such a hard time? Contract negotiations with non-union personnel? Why does it not say union personnel?
That's why it's the language in the law, in the law.
Okay. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. Negotiation discussions. We will be talking about AEA Unit D.
And possibly bus and cafeteria.
And school bus operators, local 680, and school cafeteria workers.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, Ms. Exton?
Yes.
Mr. Carden?
Yes.
Dr. Allison Ampe?
Yes.
Mr. Thielman?
Yes.
Mr. Schlickman?
Yes.
Ms. Gittleson?
Yes.
And I am also yes, and my understanding is, is that we are not anticipating returning from this executive session, so we will adjourn from there. All right, good work.